Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Sorry. Nobody answered. I am Lupita Cepeda, President of the Laredo College Board of Trustees. Today is August twenty-second. The time is six o'clock. We are convening a public hearing on the proposed Laredo College Fiscal Year 2025 budget. I will preside as Chair of the hearing. And Ms. Ramos, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Jedy Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia?
Absent.
Cindy Leando?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.? Esteban Rangel?
Here's.
Karina Lisondo?
Absent.
Tita Cantubela?
Absent.
Absent.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum with Mr. Rangel on Zoom.
Thank you. As background information for the public, the Laredo College Board of Trustees is holding a meeting immediately after this public hearing to adopt the budget for Laredo College Fiscal Year 2025. In addition to adopting the budget, the Board will also adopt a property tax rate for 2024. Okay, just want to make sure. Our public hearing today will allow members of the public to express to the Board of Trustees any comments in favor of or against the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Each person will be allowed to step up to the podium, one at a time, introduce themselves, and express their views regarding the proposed 2025 budget. The Board will allow each individual up to three minutes to present individual views. Speakers shall confine their remarks to the appropriation of funds as contained in the proposed 2025 budget. According to Laredo College Board of Trustees' policy, CC Local, no officer or employee from the college is required to respond to questions from speakers. Anyone who wishes to address the Board can now proceed to the podium. Anyone here? Anyone here to speak on behalf or against? We didn't have anybody sign any. Okay. So, this concludes the Laredo College Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Budget. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed, the time is 6:03. Today is August twenty-second. The time is six o'clock. We are convening a public hearing on the proposed Laredo College Fiscal Year 2025 budget. I will preside as Chair of the hearing. And Ms. Ramos, please call the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Jedy Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia?
Absent.
Cindy Leando?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.? Esteban Rangel? Karina Lisondo?
Absent.
Tita Cantubela?
Absent.
Absent.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum with Mr. Rangel on Zoom.
Thank you. As background information for the public, the Laredo College Board of Trustees is holding a meeting immediately after this public hearing to adopt the budget for Laredo College Fiscal Year 2025. In addition to adopting the budget, the Board will also adopt a property tax rate for 2024. Okay, just want to make sure. Our public hearing today will allow members of the public to express to the Board of Trustees any comments in favor of or against the proposed fiscal year 2025 budget. Each person will be allowed to step up to the podium, one at a time, introduce themselves, and express their views regarding the proposed 2025 budget. The Board will allow each individual up to three minutes to present individual views. Speakers shall confine their remarks to the appropriation of funds as contained in the proposed 2025 budget. According to Laredo College Board of Trustees' policy, CC Local, no officer or employee from the college is required to respond to questions from speakers. Anyone who wishes to address the Board can now proceed to the podium. Anyone here? Anyone here to speak on behalf or against? We didn't have anybody sign any. Okay. So, this concludes the Laredo College Public Hearing on the Proposed Fiscal Year 2025 Budget. I will now entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing is now closed, the time is 6:03. So now we will move to go to our regular monthly Board Meeting of Trustees. We've already... Okay, I'm going to go ahead and call it to order. Welcome again. And if I can have Mr. Delgado say the prayer and Mr. Martinez pledge allegiance, please, please stand.
Loving and gracious God, you are indeed the giver of all good gifts, and we thank you today for all of your blessings, for the successful outcomes of our college events, and for all of our faculty, our staff, and our students. We ask that you bless them abundantly as we continue to seek your wisdom, your guidance, your courage, and strength. Be with us in our deliberations and help us to be wise in the decisions we make for the good of all those who have placed their trust and confidence in our leadership. Give us the insight to lead with integrity so that our decisions may reflect what is right and what is good. Dear Lord, grant us the humility to always seek your will in all that we do and all that we say. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is ours. One nation under God, indivisible, indivisible,天地同寿. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mrs. Ramos, can you?
Hall roll. Yes, ma'am. Lupita Cepeda?
Present.
Jorge Jedy Delgado?
Present.
Jackie Levin Ramos, present. Erica Benavides Garcia?
Present.
Cindy Leando?
Present.
Mercurio Martinez Jr.?
Present.
Esteban Rangel?
Present.
Karina Lisondo?
Absent.
Tita Cantubela? Absent. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. But the record show that a quorum of Board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act. Next item I have is approval of the minutes of the regular monthly Board Meeting of July twenty-fifth and special Board Meeting on August the sixth.
That's a move, Madam Chair.
Seconds, I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item I have is public testimony, do we have anybody that's signed up? No one's signed up. Next item is number five, recognition, introduction of personnel and new personnel actions for the month. Five A's Division of Health Sciences, licensor?
Licenseur.
Licenseur. Pass rates, updates for physical therapist assistant, associated degree in nursing, and vocational nursing programs. Dr. Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina and Dr. Esmeralda Vargas. Well, you're already there, good.
Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina, Provost Vice President of Academic Affairs. Good evening, Board members, admin, staff, and all the members here that are with us today. As a provost, I'm very proud to say that we have great quality in our health science programs. And how do we know that? Is by not just the outstanding faculty, but the curriculum that's carried out, and most importantly, that our students are able to pass these licenses for the healthcare industry with flying colors. And so here to present more details on each of our program is Dr. Vargas.
Good evening, Madam President, Trustees, Dr. Ramirez, LC Administration, faculty, staff, and community members. I'm delighted to share the outstanding achievement in first-time licensure pass rates for three programs within the Health Sciences Division. This remarkable success is a testament to the dedication and hard work of our faculty. Their commitment to excellence and tireless efforts in supporting and guiding our students have been instrumental in reaching this milestone. The faculty use of innovative teaching methods, personalized mentorship, and untiring pursuit of academic excellence has not only set high standards for our programs, but has also significantly contributed to our students' success. Their dedication has created an environment where students can thrive and reach their full potential. We're very proud of our graduates for their hard work and determination, and I'm deeply grateful to our faculty for their exceptional contributions. Their passion, perseverance, and shared vision have been instrumental in achieving these extraordinary results. I would like to now recognize the Physical Therapist Assistant Program for achieving a 100% first-time licensure pass rate with a class of 2024. Ten students sat and passed the Physical Therapist Assistant National Physical Therapy Exam on the first attempt. I serve as the PTA Program Director, and the PTA Program faculty include Ms. Yolanda Guzman and Ms. Jacqueline Villaln. If you may please stand to be recognized. Next, I want to recognize the Associate Degree Nursing Program for achieving a 100% first-time licensure pass rate with a class of 2023. Forty-seven graduates sat and passed the NCLEX RN on the first attempt. The ADN Program is under the leadership of Dr. Michael Martinez, and faculty include Ms. Tracy Humphries, Ms. Melissa Guidry, Ms. Jeanette Johnson, Ms. Nancy Vella, Ms. Yo, and Mr. Adrian Ramirez. If you will please stand to be recognized. I would also like to recognize the VN Program for achieving a 97.4% first-time licensure pass rate with the class of 2023. Seventy-six graduates sat and passed the NCLEX PN on the first attempt. The VN Program is under the leadership of Ms. Rosalinda Montemayor, and faculty include Dr. Esmeralda Gutierrez, Ms. Norma Martinez, Ms. Jennifer Hernandez, Ms. Mariliza Martinez, Ms. Blanca Corona, Mr. Jose Perales, and Ms. Guadalupe Navarro. Please stand so that you can be recognized. I'm very grateful to the administration, Dr. Ramirez, Dr. Tijerina, and the Board for their continuous support of the Health Science Division programs, which assist us in preparing the next generation of healthcare providers. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good work.
Anyone want to say anything? Congratulations, everyone.
Congratulations.
Great job. Great job, keep up the great work. That was it for that one? Okay. Five B's Division of Academic Innovation and Technology Recognitions, Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez. She has a QM webinar, Support Student Success with QM Standards and Text-to-Speech Technology, presented by Beatriz Flores Martinez on August eighth, 2024. QM Connect Conference, Preventing a Domino Effect, Grasping Alignment, submitted and will be presented by Anna Gonzalez for November third, 2024 conference. IWCA International Writing Centers Association, Empowering Our Writers, Enhancing Communication, Cultivating Independence, submitted and presented by Maria Partida, IWCA 2024 Online Conference.
Marisela Rodriguez Tijerina, Provost Vice President of Academic Affairs. Dr. Elizabeth Rodriguez is at a very important forum for accreditation right now in Austin, so I'm presenting on her behalf. If Beatriz Flores can first, Martinez can stand next to me. And we want to highlight these individuals because they're very strong in the academic support of not only helping our faculty, but helping our students. Beatriz is an e-learning and instructional design specialist at Laredo College. Recently participated in a roundtable discussion hosted by Quality Matters, a global leader in quality assurance for online and innovative digital teaching and learning environments, and REED speaker, a leader in the speech-to-text industry. The session centered on leveraging QM standards for course design and REED speakers' text-speech technology to enhance online learning environments by fostering a sense of belonging and enhancing student success. Beatriz emphasized the impact of these tools on OER content across modalities aligning the universal design principles. Her insights resonated with over 1,200 community members in attendance. The CEO of QM, it's a national copyright association, was very, Quality Matters. She, the CEO of Quality Matters, was very impressed with her discussion, highlighting Laredo College's commitment and contributions to innovation and continuous report. It was said, "It's not about the tools, it's all about the possibilities." So definitely wanted to highlight Ms. Martinez. Next, this is Ms. Anna Gonzalez. Ms. Anna is the Lead Instructional Designer Specialist for the e-Learning Center and has facilitated designing your online course workshop for 180 instructors teaching online and hybrid at Laredo College. In doing so, she realized that the concept of alignment deserves individualized attention. Achieving alignment ensures that critical course components reinforce one another to ensure that our students achieve the learning objectives. Ms. Gonzalez created a proposal based on this concept to make alignment the sole topic of a session to emphasize its importance. The proposal will be proudly presented at this year's Quality Matters Connect Conference for representatives from a member community of 1,500 organizations in over 30 countries across six continents.
Impressive.
Congratulations.
And Ms. Maria Partida. The International Writing Centers Association is dedicated to supporting the growth and development of writing center directors, tutors, and staff through the sponsorship of events, publications, and various professional initiatives. It actively promotes scholarship in fields related to writing centers and serves as a global platform for addressing writing center concerns and interests. As a current member of the IWCA, she had the privilege of receiving the IWCA Future Leaders Award last year. This year, she's honored that her proposal titled "Empowering Our Writers, Enhancing Communication, Cultivating Independence" has been accepted in the 2024 IWCA Online Conference, which will take place October 21st through the 20th, sorry, 21st through the 27th of 2024. Presenting at this conference offers an opportunity to share insights from our program at LC, including the comprehensive range of resources and services offered by our writing center. As these initiatives are designed to enhance students' writing and research skills while promoting effective communication. As always, our mission as a team is to empower learners to become confident, independent writers equipped with the skills necessary for the academic and professional success. So we're very proud of Ms. Partida.
Congratulations, ladies, and thank you for all your hard work. Any comments?
I would like to say something. It reflects, thank you, it reflects on the work that we are doing here at the college. All of these faculty members and staff members that, day in and day out, try to figure out new ways of supporting our students and providing them with not only the support services, but the initiative and the understanding of the why they're here and the what they're learning, and how to do it better. And kudos to all of them for their dedication continuously to our students and to the excellence that this college provides all of our students. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. I'm going to continue with five C, Laredo College Student Orientations. Dr. Fred Solis?
Good evening, Madam President, esteemed Board members, President Ramirez, colleagues, and visitors. Fred Solis, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment for the Record. This evening, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce a group of students that give up their summer to basically greet and meet new students that are coming to Laredo College for the very first time, otherwise known as our New Student Orientation. And this year was no exception in terms of the success of this program. We've served more than almost 1,000 students during the summer. In one particular day, we served almost 500 students that came in all at once to learn about the college for the first time, to experience the college, receive information about the college, and then also tour the college as well. So it gives me a great pleasure to introduce collectively all of our student leaders that serve as student, or as orientation leaders, rather, guiding the different groups of students throughout the campus, providing presentations, and basically welcoming them to our campus. Will all the student leaders, please, come to the front?
Thank you, Brad.
Hi. Very nice.
Additionally, I would be remiss if I couldn't recognize the Director of Student Life, who puts this program together, Mr. Pedro Rivera, and his assistant.
Ariana.
Mariana. And so Pedro, I'll call on you so you can do the roll call of the student leaders themselves, so we can recognize them individually.
Good evening, everybody. Pedro Rivera, Director of Student Life, for the record. It brings me great joy to present my students to you all. Like Dr. Solis mentioned, they work hard, they give up their entire summer. They're here for the entire day, they have to learn lots of content. It is difficult to speak in front of crowds of over 100 people, and they do it well. And so I just want to make sure that we give them an opportunity to get recognized and just... It is difficult to quantify student engagement, but we know it's important to retention, we know that what they do is important. And so this is a great opportunity to recognize everything that they do. It's a good bunch of people, so bear with me, okay? So our first student orientation leader right here is Ramundo Gonzalez. We also have Lindsay Nini Vayesteros. Arnold Benavides. We already know this one, Ana Gisela Gigi Perez Aleman. And one of the things that I will say about Gigi and Joyce, who you'll meet later on, is these student orientation leaders actually led some sessions in Spanish. We realize that we do need to provide those specific sessions for students that are starting classes with us here at Laredo College in Spanish. And so they led those efforts. At times, they had the biggest groups, they spoke to people, the groups of people were 50, 60, 70 people. So I do want to recognize that effort there. Next person that we have is Ms. Daryle Salinas. We also have Ms. Barbara Barbie Luna. As I mentioned before, we also have Ms. Joyce Gonzalez. We also have Mr. Lauro Esquivel. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Sadi Lopez. Daryle, Lauro, and Sadi, we're actually, we borrowed them from the Office of Event Services. I do want to make sure that I give out a shout-out to Ms. Cristina Valenciano for letting us borrow your students. Great students overall, I genuinely appreciate the help. And that's our 2024 Orientation Leaders, everyone. Thank you.
Would you like to take a picture?
So, does anybody want to say anything from the students? Oh, Gigi.
So I had a great experience here in Laredo College, and I want to say thank you to Mr. Rivera because he gave us the opportunity to give the orientations in Spanish. So I'm very happy with that, and I hope that in next orientations, the Spanish speakers have the opportunity to have orientations and also more resources in Spanish. Thank you.
What else?
I do just want to say thank you for allowing us to actually promote this program. Thank you for the collaborative effort on behalf of the college, all of the departments that actually help us. Ms. Cano, Mr. Cano, Ms. Cristina's department. Seeing the collaboration between all of the departments, it genuinely helps us, and we thank everyone, so thank you.
So, Brian, did you, you all want to come to the front and take a photograph with the Board? Especially some of, how many of you are leaving or graduate, have graduated and are gone? Only one? We're only losing two, we're losing two. Okay.
Well, congratulations, and thank you for everything that you do for the student orientation. We really appreciate it. Thank you. You all want to come forward, Board?
Not too long, so how can we organize it?
You went up for sure in the back.
Of course.
You don't have to say that. Never, never, really.
Madam President, if I may, just, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fred. Thank you, Dr. Solis. Next item is five D, Introduction of Personnel, Personnel Actions. Dr. Miniter Ramirez?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and this being the beginning of our semester, I have quite a lengthy list of new hires. And so if you all will bear with me, I'm going to ask all the names as I read your name for you all to come forward, if you all want to wait for them here in the front and get to meet and greet everyone, and then we can take a photograph at the end. All right, Instructional Assistant in Cosmetology, Naomi Murillo. Workforce Education Coordinator, Miriam Inohosa. Intervention Specialist, Marisa Parra. Promotion for Assistant Director of Event Services, Salvador Charafa III. Promotion for Assistant Director of Event Services, Salvador Sarafa III. New Hire Associate Degree Nursing Instructor, Jackie L. Almarado. New Hire Teaching Assistant at the South Campus, Abril A. Campos. New Hire Spanish ESOL Instructor, Dr. Gabriela Diaz. Psychology Instructor, New Hire, Nelson Liendo. Teaching Assistant at the South Campus, New Hire, Ruby Linares. Okay. English Instructor, New Hire, Carlos A. Palacios. Yay, he made it. New Hire. New Hire, uh, Assistant Director of Student Life, Mariana Rodriguez. New Hire Biology Instructor, David A. Ruiz. New Hire Academic Advisor, Jessica Dominguez. Promotion Administrative Assistant One for the Dean of Health Sciences, Maricela Villalobos. New Hire English Instructor, Francisco Zamora. There were several, uh, actually there were five people that couldn't be here today on the faculty. Uh, and in a couple of other areas, so we're going to bring them next month so that you all can meet them. So now I don't know how you're going to take this picture. Okay? You all want chairs? You all want to grab some chairs? Sal. We need to, we need to bang Kito right here. They need to come back next month.
No, he actually was my colleague at the school. He was working there, so I miss him. So he came over here.
Was that cleared out the room? People can breathe, okay. So next item is the Faculty Senate Report, Dr. Gilbert Martinez.
He's at the podium.
Yeah, yes.
Just wait till the door closes.
Good evening, Honorable Trustees, President Ramirez, guests. Uh, Gilberto Martinez, Faculty Senate President, I'm also Drama Speech Instructor here at Laredo College. I, I wanted to tell the student orientation, I thought they left. But it's true, because I was fortunate enough to teach all summer. And they, I would see them running around at all hours and I would jokingly tell them, hey, put them in my class, put them in my class. And I was just joking, but oh no, they put them in my class. And, and so, uh, yes, they're doing a great job. Uh, I, I have just a, a short report and it's really just of things that we're going to discuss. Because although we met as a faculty at convocation, it was kind of an informal meeting. So I just kind of want to preview what we're going to be talking about in September. And then, you know, that'll come back, it's uh, to the board. So the first thing is that um, we, the Faculty Senate is going to be discussing faculty titles again. And I say again, because I know they changed a few years ago. But because um, tenure is really not an option anymore uh, from here on out. Uh, we're going to have to tweak the faculty titles a little bit. And what I think we're looking at is, is in reality, just temporarily adding two new faculty titles. Which would describe the remaining tenured uh, faculty. Uh, so the, the rest of the faculty titles, really, uh, the tenure requirement will be removed. And then um, we'll go by years of service. Uh, another thing that we're going to discuss is the possibility of adding a, another officer position. But this position would be appointed by uh, President Ramirez, it would be an ombudsman, I have trouble with that word, I can't.
Ombudsman.
Ombudsman, there you go. And uh, and, and so that particular faculty member would be tenured until we run out of tenured faculty members and so forth. But we'll be discussing that next month. And then the last thing is, we're kind of hoping to have a faculty mixer um, uh, next month. We're still going to be looking at dates, but we would love for as many board members to come so you can get to know the faculty in a social setting. And, and so forth. And um, that's basically it. The only other thing I wanted to talk about is that faculty have been telling me is of, of, of a good problem. And the good problem is, we, we, it's hard to find parking. Because um, you know, there, it's full at all times of the day, in the morning especially. Uh, afternoon and e- e- even now it's trickling away. So that's just, that means only one thing, is that our classrooms are full, our students are coming to class. And i- it's a huge difference from uh, one year to the next, so. Good problem to have. We're just going to have to get here a little earlier is what I tell everybody. But thank you very much, and that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Martinez. The next item is Staff Senate Report. Uh, and I understand Mr. Santolat is not here, so there's no report. The next item is Information Items. Eight A Foreign, Foreign Trade Zone Designation Request, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yes, this is for information only. A Letter of Concurrent Supporting the Establishment of the Foreign Trade Zone Designation of. Uh, Lopez Adri Forwarding LLC Located at twenty-two four zero one Mines Road, Laredo, Texas seven eight oh four five. For fifteen hundred square feet warehouse area and twenty-four thousand square feet yard area within the warehouse premises was, was issued. Um, the request did come in and following our policy and procedure, we went ahead and filed. Uh, with the Webb County Appraisal District or sent the letter um, approving that request.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Eight B is Webb County Appraisal District, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Reappraisal Plan, Dr. Minita Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, for this, two is informational item. The Webb County Appraisal District Letter on the Approved twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six Reappraisal Plan is attached in your booklets. Uh, a complete copy of the twenty-five, twenty-six Reappraisal, Appraisal Plan was approved and adopted by the Board of Directors. And can be assessed on the Webb County uh, or viewed on the Webb County Appraisal District website. I don't know if anybody has any questions about that, but um, but it's all there.
Any questions? Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. Move to the next item. Eight C, Southern Association of Colleges and School Commissions on Colleges Liaison Visit, Dr. David Arizola.
Good evening, Board Members, Dr. Ramirez, colleagues. David Arizola, Vice President of Compliance and Risk Management for the Record. I- in December of, of last year, Dr. Ramirez and I were attending the annual meeting for SACCOC. And uh, she had the idea of inviting Dr. Jeffrey Klein uh, to kick off our, our convocation this year. Um, Dr. Klein graciously agreed and was actually very happy to, to come in and, and be part of convocation. He said he, he missed that part of, of being a faculty member uh, in, in his day. So Dr. Klein is our SACCOC VP. So uh, our creditor, the Southern Associations of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges, has about twelve vice presidents. And each vice president is assigned uh, somewhere between eighty uh, to a hundred schools. Right? So Dr. Klein is assigned about eighty-eight and we're one of his schools uh, that uh, that he oversees. Or, or serves as a liaison for accreditation. So the purpose of his visit was um, to, twofold, right? So he was here, first of all, to kick off the fifth year interim review process with a presentation at our convocation. So he gave a wonderful presentation, a good overview, not only of the fifth year process, but also of the accreditation of what accreditation means. Uh, to colleges and, and universities. And then in the afternoon, he sat down with our writing teams, so we've assigned nine writing teams. Uh, and to go over each part of the fifth year. So all the teams that, that we've assigned have already submitted their very early first drafts of, of the narratives that we have to submit. Um, so we were able to collect those, we sent to, sent those to him in advance and he gave us a lot of great feedback. So um, to be able to have that feedback a year before that report is due. Is going to be invaluable to, to the institutions, because it really sets us up for, for success as far as uh, the physio process is concerned. So he gave us um, a, a few tips, which I thought were one of, one of the more valuable parts of his presentation. He had a lot of slides and they're all great. Uh, this is the one that kind of stood in my, stood out in my mind. Um, as far as when, when we write for accreditation, uh, some of the more important things is, are that, number one. Uh, only provide answers to the questions you're being asked, right? So don't, don't say more than you really need, right? Uh, second, uh, he says, it does take everybody to, to write this, right? So it doesn't, this, the compliance doesn't belong to the IE office, it doesn't belong to my office. It's really uh, the entire institution that has to contribute to make sure that we're all. Uh, not only does that help us get things done, it also helps everybody else understand the accreditation process. Um, it does give us an, an opportunity to focus or refocus our compliance efforts. I know that uh, just in, in the last month that we've been kind of putting everything together, we've learned some things that we need to clean up. And little things that we need to polish up before uh, we start writing. So it's really helped us um, again, just like he says, refocus on compliance and, and, and then bring in some, some of the newer folks. So we've done uh, the accreditation a couple of times before. Uh, but bringing in some of the newer folks, it's getting them familiar with the process as well. And um, the last couple, the last thing he says is, use this to recognize your, your success, right? So not only, this is not only a time to, to look at what we're doing, except point out the things that we're doing wrong. But uh, we're not doing anything wrong. Everything's good. It's not only a time to point out the, the opportunities to improve, right? But also a time to uh, you know, pick up on the successes that we've had and really highlight some of those. And then, and include them in, in the narratives that we're writing. So this is a timeline, um, you know, one of the uh, metaphors he uses, he says we have two bites at this app, right? So we're, we have two chances to submit the fifth year interim report. But this calendar, um, you know, our plan is only, we only want one bite, right? So we want to do, uh, get this done the first time. So in, in July, we had everybody submit uh, drafts for Dr. Klein to review. He, like I said, he did. Um, he admitted he wasn't able to review all of them, but uh, he did review enough to provide some good feedback. And we had our visit, uh, right around mid-October, Dr. Ramirez will get a, an email from uh, Dr. Whelan. Uh, notifying uh, her that Laredo College, it's time for Laredo College's fifth year interim report. So we'll, uh, from then on out, we'll keep uh, uh, we'll keep uh, submitting drafts. So keep working with each other or together to make, making sure the drafts are done. And then we'll attend the annual meeting in December. I understand some of the uh, board members will be in attendance as well. It's going to be close in Austin, very, very rare that we have a chance to attend an annual meeting that close. Usually they're in, you know, the closest we have is Dallas or Houston, but most of the time they're in Atlanta or Nashville. And it does, uh, yeah, you have to travel far together, so it's a nice to have it close by. We'll probably wait till the spring to focus on collecting supporting documents. Only because a lot of the supporting documents that we need for the fifth year don't, don't exist yet, right? So uh, they're still being collected, some of the data is still being put together. Um, and uh, so we'll, we'll start with a collection in the spring. And, and then our fifth year interim report is officially due September eighth of twenty twenty-five. So that gets reviewed at the annual meeting and, or right before the annual meeting in, in December of twenty twenty-five. And then we'll hear back the results from there, right? So if um, there's anything that we need to address further, they'll let us know after December. And then we'll have until March to submit again. The last time we did this in, in twenty fifteen, um, we submitted the fifth year, same, same timeline in September. We were asked to clarify, I believe, uh, three or four, maybe four standards. Clarified that, cleared it all on the first try, on the, on that second try and everything was good, right? So, uh, again, we're trying to get to, we're still trying to get to that perfection and then that's, yeah, I'm going to do that before every time. And that's uh, that, that took for the update, any questions?
Any questions? Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I just want to say that time flew by really.
I know, I know.
But we did this a while back and I am just amazed at how time has flown by so quickly. And you know, it's, it's not as scary as it was before. Um, at least the feeling that I had was apprehension and, you know, um, fear, right? Not because you all were doing anything wrong, but it's because I just didn't know what we were uh, going to be evaluated on. And so once they came and, you know, they reviewed everything, um, there was a little bit more calmness, a- at least for myself. And, and also for the board. I think we were very impressed. And um, this is another, you know, best impression for us. And I'm really uh, proud to be part of this second, or hopefully no, no. I don't know what happens in the future, but another ten year, but the five year is going to be a good opportunity again to experience. That uh, reevaluation and, and the process itself. So thank you once again.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes Dr. Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and um, I, I do want to say that the, the, the only reason. We can say that right now we're perfect in every way, as, as Dr. Arizola wants to say all the time. Is because these nine teams of, of our employees who have been meeting rigorously. Because he and, and Dr. Martinez have been corralling our nine teams in the different areas. And all of vice presidents are involved, all of the deans are involved, everybody with. within all of the areas is involved and everybody's giving feedback. And everybody's doing their surveys and everybody's collecting their data. And and I think that this is the one time that we can say everybody gets touched by this somehow, including the board. And so I I do want to thank uh Dr. Arizola and Dr. Martinez for their leadership on this, on this because this really does identify who we are and gives value to the degrees that we offer. And and the certificates and the and the licensures, everything we do is validated by whether or not we're SAC accredited. And so um the credit goes to them and after, I guess, the spring, it's up to to us to read every single thing over the summer or next summer to make sure that what we're submitting is clear, concise and and reflective of everything that it is that that everyone at this campus is doing. And so um i- it is, it is a huge undertaking and they're doing a great job. So thank you all.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to go to the next item, which is Board Committee Reports, nine A, Student Success Committee Meeting Report. Mrs. Erica Benavides Garcia.
Good evening, everyone. On Monday, August nineteenth, we had a student success committee meeting. I'm just going to quickly go over some of the um agenda items that we went over or that we discussed. Um the first one was Student Success Report Card and Dr. Arizola, I I saw that it's on the agenda, so I know he's going to go over that. Just quickly, it's just the Student Success Report Card for Laredo College's an accountability tool that measures and communicates the performance and progress of students within the institution. This um report card includes key indicators for which we're graded, right? We're, we're a large college and and our comparison for the report card is with other large colleges as far as enrollment and those other key indicators. For the most part, we're doing very well. Our numbers are increasing and because of that and House Bill eight, our projections show that we are and will be receiving more state funding. The second was Enrollment and Graduation Update. Um our projections show that um fall enrollment as of the first day of school was up two percent from last year. The total graduates for the year has gone up about twenty percent, a little, a little over four hundred students from last year. Our graduation count for uh L two certificates and occupational skills are basically steady while the L one certificates are up by over two hundred. Associates degrees in arts, science, and applied science are also up from last year. Our graduation count um by bachelor's degrees in nursing does show a decline from last year from seventeen to ten. But the bachelor's in organizational leadership did um show an increase of seventeen uh more grads. Non-credit continuing ed institutional credentials leading to licensure or certification is up from last year. Financial aid uh update shows that we're behind from last year due to the fact that we're not receiving many of the files rejected because you know, we we are behind, or not we, the people that send us our information. Um but again, you know, we are receiving files every day, new files uh every day. The update on the Palomino pledge, the total number of students eligible is a thousand nine hundred and forty-three. Seventeen hundred and six are covered by financial aid, authorized aid, and/or contracts and exemptions or are covered by contract and exemptions only, which leaves a total of two hundred and thirty-three students with the Palomino pledge commitment, which totals three hundred and sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents in the fund commitment. Students will be notified by email and it will also show up in their financial aid info as to what, you know, they're receiving. We go on to general ed. This was presented by um three uh teachers here, Ms. Maribel, Mitsui, Ms. Yatita Rodriguez, and Ms. Adriana Gonzalez. And this uh falls under, I guess, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board and they have requirements. And um the requirements are based on content description, core objectives, and semester credit hour requirements. Laredo College General Ed uh has institutional rubrics. The assessment of objective learning outcomes is essential to meet the core requirements of all six general ed competencies. And those competencies are communication, teamwork, critical thinking, empirical and quantitative skills, social responsibility, and personal responsibility. Um in the spring of twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, the overall trends and recommendations um from the different surveys that they did and the different studies showed that they, we, uh the need for practical hands-on experience and clear assessment criteria, the importance of faculty development to support the teaching of competencies, and the integration of real-world applications to enhance learning outcomes. They had institution-wide strategies. One was faculty development. The other one was CTELL. Department workshops, general ed workshops and training on the rubrics and other um processes. Then they had curriculum and uh curriculum integration. And that was standardizing the integration of signature assignments, rubrics, and practical applications across all the departments. And it was CTELL, various teacher-designed activities that will help to target the competencies, the general ed rubrics on the Laredo uh College website. From spring twenty-three to spring twenty-four, also the overall trend and recommendations moving forward were student support, enhanced student systems such as writing centers, tutoring services, and access to research tools to aid students in developing the these competencies. Um we have the LC Writing Center, the LC Library, TurnItIn, class, and signature assignments, and online tutoring. Then we go on to assessment and feedback. Implement consistent assessment and feedback mechanisms to monitor progress and make data-driven decisions for continuous improvement. This is going to be done by review of general ed rubric with students alongside the signature assignments, grade classroom assignments using the general ed rubrics. General ed faculty trainings have a training calendar, divisional meetings, committee meetings, and dual enrollment faculty training. By addressing these recommendations, Laredo College can improve the six competency drill skills across various departments, ensuring that the students are well-prepared for academic and professional success. Then we went on to continuing education uh with Miss Sandra Fortes. And we talked about Laredo Cares twenty-four, twenty-five. The funding went up seven hundred, the funding is up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city of Laredo and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Laredo College. From September twenty twenty-four to August twenty twenty-five, excuse me, I have allergies. Twenty twenty-four, twenty-four, we have nineteen programs. The expected number of participants are six hundred and twenty-nine and the allocated funding for that is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Workforce training industry credential programs include, in business, associate professional in human, I'm sorry, associate professional in human resources, bookkeeping and quick books, Google project management, legal administrative professional assistant, office management and leadership. In transportation, logistics, and trade, we have certified forklift operator and warehouse safety, certified logistics associates, certified logistic technician, professional truck and bus driving, and HVAC technician. In the healthcare area, we have certified medical administrative assistant, EKG technician, medical billing and coding, patient care technician, pharmacy technician, lobotomy, registered dental assistant, and licensed vocational nursing. In the education area, we have substitute teaching academy for readiness. The top five workforce programs that we have are pharmacy technician, we have sixty-one, substitute teachers, fifty-one, dental assistants, forty, forklift operator and warehouse safety, thirty-nine, patient care technicians, thirty-four, bookkeeping and quick books, thirty, and professional truck driving CDL, twenty-seven. Our upcoming job fair will be November twenty twenty-four. And um one more thing, the adult education and literacy enrollment for twenty-three, twenty-four was a thousand one hundred and eighty. Enrolled in a continuing education program are a hundred and one. Vouchers issued were two hundred and sixty, there's sixty-five sets times four exams. And we had forty-five GED recipients as well as eighteen transitioned to non-degreed and degreed programs.
Very good, thank you. Mrs. Garcia, next item we have is nine B. I'm sorry, did anybody have any questions? The next item is nine B, Finance and Audit Committee Meeting Report. Mr. Jorge J. Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it is time that I go first next time to have a follow-up. Mrs. Garcia, I mean, I read this. But um we we conducted our finance and audit committee meeting and as usual, we went over our financial report and definitely grateful for Mr. Vela and his team for going through. Um we also went over annual subscription uh for the library expenses that occurred as well as a ratification for an emergency repair for the chill water line. Uh and of course, last but not least, and of course, the most exciting uh agenda topic for our finance committee was the renewal for the property insurance for Laredo College. While I don't, I was discussed at length with Mr. Angel and we're grateful for Judge Martinez for joining as well as the rest of the administration. Uh it is unfortunate that as everybody else is feeling these on the personal level, that insurance rates are increasing as well as deductibles and all the other fun stuff that exists with insurance, uh but in hopes that, you know, we can keep in line with all the recommendations that have been given by the administration to continue to repair the buildings that we have uh in hopes that we avoid further damage to any of the weather events that may come in the future. And with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado, any questions? The next item is number ten, the Consent Agenda. So we have ten A, July twenty twenty-four financial report, ten B, approval for the annual subscription for the library's Cersei Dynix Enterprise System. Ten C, ratification of emergency repair for Lerma Peña Chill Waterline. Ten D, Student Success Report Card. Ten E, approval or renewal of Laredo College property insurance.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item uh is number eleven, Discussion and Possible Action. We will move to item eleven A, which reads, Approved Certification of the Corrected Twenty Twenty Four Tax Rule. Mr. Cesar Vela and Ms. Patricia Barrera will present this item.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Ramirez, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration for the record. Uh tonight, uh we're bringing this item uh to request approval on the corrected twenty twenty-four certified tax rule values. Uh the board originally approved the certified tax rules back in July twenty-fifth. However, we did receive a corrected tax rule uh on August the third from the Webb County Appraisal District. Ms. Barrera has provided us with the corrected twenty twenty-four certified tax rule values. Uh you should have received the copy uh as part of your packet. Uh and tonight, we do have Ms. Barrera here joining us uh and I'll go ahead and ask her to uh just provide the details of the uh the certification of the tax rules.
Good evening, for the record, Patricia Barrera, Webb County, Texas as a collector. Uh when we were trying to get the tax rate for the college, our numbers just wouldn't jive with Mr. Vela and and he with us. And we finally realized that the error wasn't on our calculations. The error was that there was a mistake on the appraisal district. And had we not had that issue, I don't think any entity would have realized it and we would have just gone straight. But because Mr. Vela always gets his numbers and and it, and and because of that, we realized that we were completely off. And so we realized that there was an error in in the calculation. So the total market value remains the same, which is thirty billion, three hundred and forty-six million, five hundred and sixty-four thousand and seventy-two dollars. The exemption remains the same, which is a negative of six billion, sixty-three million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight. So the total should be
Thirty-eight.
Ma'am?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight, I'm sorry, now I've got glasses on. The the total net taxable value comes out to twenty-four uh billion, two hundred and eighty-two mil, two hundred and eighty-two million, nine hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and thirty-four dollars. It was on the limited taxable value, what we call on the, what's part of the freeze that we uh had the error. We had originally one, one billion, five hundred and forty-four million, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand and twenty dollars. The correct number should be a minus of one billion, nine hundred and twenty-one million, three hundred and seventy-three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine. So the freeze adjusted taxable value should be twenty-two million
Billion of billion.
Billion, three hundred and sixty-one million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, four hundred and five. So there was a a decrease because the the limited tax value in line fourteen was greater. So that's the corrected and the and the tax rate that we came up with, that Mr. Vela wanted, it it's done correct. It was just this that needed to be corrected and basically it was the appraisal district in its calculations just did an error and it affected every entity. So had we not found it because of Mr. Vela and his is very astute and very accurate, we would have, everybody would have been off. So thank you, Mr. Vela, for correcting us.
Madam Chair, if I'm in order, I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the certification of the corrected two thousand twenty-four tax rule.
Second. So I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mrs. Ramos. Any discussion? None heard, I do need to take a record vote. Ms. Leendo?
I approve.
Mrs. Ramos?
I approve.
Lupita, I approve. Mr. Angel?
I do.
Mr. Delgado?
I approve.
Mrs. Garcia?
I approve.
Mr. Martinez?
I approve.
So motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Next item is eleven B one, which reads, Resolution Adopting Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Budget. For this item, the board will be asked to adopt the twenty twenty-five fiscal year budget for Laredo College. The resolution will need to be read out loud in a vote by the board taken after Mr. Cesar Vela will present the item. Mr. Vela, please proceed.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, uh Dr. Ramirez, Cesar Vela, VP of Finance and Administration for the record. Uh before I present the uh twenty twenty-five proposed budget, I would like to uh thank all the department heads and their staff for working diligently in assisting us with the uh creation of the budget for this year. Um I personally want to thank also Ms. Linda Gomez, who I think she's here uh and her staff for compiling all this information uh her office and getting it uh summarized for us to be able to uh present to the board. Uh also, uh I would like to thank Dr. Ramirez and the VPs for their assistance also on the uh creation of the budget. Uh and also uh Mr. Chavez, IT Director, for actually providing the forms that were used this year. Uh and as well as Ms. Barrera, who helped us with the uh calculation of the tax rate. So before we move uh to the resolutions on the budget, I'll go ahead and provide uh an update on the projected revenue. Uh so first of all, we looked at several factors uh for the creation of the twenty twenty-five budget. So first of all, we looked at several factors for the creation of the twenty-twenty-five budget. The first one is that the budget that is being proposed tonight for consideration includes the three-point-two-million-dollar increase in state funding. And this is again based on performance. So we did see an increase from the twenty-four year to the, I'm sorry, from the twenty-three allocation to the twenty-four, I'm sorry, twenty-four allocation to the twenty-fifth allocation, a three-point-two-million-dollar increase in state funding. We are also including the two-point-four-million for the financial aid for SWIFT transfer, or as we know it as FASF funding. And this is the funding that the institution receives for the dual-credit students. We are also including an increase of two-point-six-million in tuition and fee revenue, and this is based on this year's tuition and fee revenue. We did surpass our projected revenue for this year by two-point-six. So that is our our target to maintain the two-point-six-million for increase for this coming year. And it also includes two-and-a-half cent property tax rate decrease. Again, no tax increases being proposed, no tuition and fee increases. Again, the last time that we brought a proposal for an increase was back in the spring of twenty-fourteen. The tax collection rate is projected to be at ninety-seven percent. And as you saw on the report by Ms. Barrera, we are seeing an increase in the property valuations of fourteen percent. For expenditures, the proposed budget includes a three-percent general pay increase for all eligible employees, and that is at a cost of nine-hundred-ninety-one-thousand, three-hundred-twenty-one. We're also proposing to implement the TASB recommendations. And these are basically recommendations to realign pay structures to market. And this is at a cost of two-hundred-eighteen-thousand, eight-hundred-seventy-four. We're also including an increase of a hundred dollars per semester hour equivalent for all adjunct and overload pay. And that would, that cost holds four-hundred-seventy-five-thousand, six-hundred-sixty-three. We're also including the three-million-dollar set-aside for the Palomino pledge. We're including to, a line item of two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand for the development of the facilities master plan. And we're also including four-hundred-seventeen-thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-eight for new positions that were approved as part of the reorg that was presented during the summer. And the budget does include four-million for new equipment. And it includes a three-point-seven-million set-aside for new programs.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
Mr. Vela.
Yes, ma'am.
Going back to the increase of a hundred dollars per semester hour equivalent for the adjunct and overload pay, wasn't the overload pay for the number of students, overloaded students or overload of?
There's actually for the number of students and for class overloads.
So this is a class overload?
This is for the class.
And so then, does that mean, how does that work? So your faculty has, is required to teach three?
The, I believe it's a
I just, I just need clarification.
Parisa Rodriguez Tequina, Provo's Vice President of Academic Affairs, for the record. So contractual obligations, they have to meet fifteen SHEs per semester. So once they reach over that, then that is considered an overload for the full-timers. Now adjunct pay, obviously, they don't get. There's no limit, but well, there is a limit with benefits. I think we can exceed more than, not more than nine.
Okay. So no more than nine for the?
Like the part-timers.
For the part-timers. So right now, it's a hundred dollars per semester increase? So?
So we're going from seven-hundred-and-twenty-five to eight, sorry, seven-fifty to eight-fifty.
To eight-fifty.
And the reason for it is if you look at the TASB report, last year, we fell short in the pay. And so to be competitive with the market analysis, we recommended that for this.
For the adjunct faculty, for the adjunct faculty or just in general?
In general. So for the overload pay and for the adjunct.
Okay. So and now we'll see eight-fifty per S H E?
Correct.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Now, this is for the undergraduate. The bachelor's degree still stayed at nine-twenty-five? Nine-hundred, sorry, nine-hundred. And that is still up until the range that it should be, but again, we'll monitor once we get another, like for the next budget cycle. That's something that we look at to ensure that we stay competitive with that as well for our teachers.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Chair recognizes Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. I just would like for you to explain the Palomino pledge if at all possible, please.
Sure. Mr. Vela?
Yes, so this is an initiative that was approved for this coming year for both the fall and the spring semester. And it is basically the institution's dedication to provide the resources to students that don't have the funds to pay for the, for tuition and fees. Now, there is a requirement and the requirement is for full-time enrollment. And again, they do need to have a FASF in place, apply for financial aid. And then again, any, any, any costs that are not covered by financial aid or scholarships, then the Palomino pledge kicks in to cover those costs for those students.
Thank you.
So for, as we look at the revenue for twenty-twenty-five, for state appropriations, as I mentioned, we are seeing a three-point-two-million-dollar increase from twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-five. And again, this is all based on performance. We did see an increase on the, on the metrics that are being currently evaluated by House Bill eight. And so Laredo College was one of the colleges that benefited by the new funding structure that we currently have. So we're seeing a three-point-two-million-dollar increase for this coming fiscal year. Tuition and fees, again, an increase of five million from eleven-point-two to sixteen-point-three million. The reason for that is again, we are now taking into account the FASF funding that we're receiving from the, from the state. And in addition to that, we are making that adjustment of two-point-six-million dollars that we received this fiscal year and taking it over to the twenty-twenty-five year. Tax revenue, based on the proposed tax rate, we will be raising the same amount of tax revenue that we had for twenty-twenty-four. You do see there a reduction of two-hundred-and-four-thousand. The reason for that is because the twenty-twenty-four budget was based on a ninety-eight-percent collection rate. We've dropped that to be a little bit more conservative to ninety-seven percent. So you see that adjustment, that one percent adjustment is impacting the, the total revenue. We are, even though we're proposing the non-new revenue tax rate, we do see an increase and that is due to the new, new properties that were added to the tax rule this fiscal year. And again, when you factor in the drop in the collection rate, that gives us the decrease of two-hundred-and-four-thousand. For tuition and fees for the Child Development Lab, we are maintaining it at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, the revenue. The indirect cost recovery, there's a decrease of two-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand. And the reason here is not that we're losing that revenue, we're just going to reclassify it and we're not going to be including it as part of the general operating revenue. This will be now handled as a, as a restricted funds that will be utilized to support the activities that are needed for the fundraising. The interest revenue, increase of half a million. And again, this is based on the current projections that we have regarding the interest rates. We have been working with the Investment Advisor on moving some of the funds to higher-yielding accounts. So we are projecting that that strategy will give us additional income when it comes to interest. The next line item is a transfer. This, this is the funding, the additional funding that we currently have. And this is based for, or reserved for the new initiatives. We have identified several programs that we are looking to launch in the next fiscal year or two. So we are making that allocation to cover costs for those programs already as part of the budget. And other income, again, no change to that. It's a hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand. So when we look at the overall proposed revenue, we're looking at eighty-million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven versus seventy-one-million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-fifty-eight. So that's an increase of eight-point-nine-million. And again, this is all based on the increase in state appropriations, increase in tuition and fee revenue, not impacting tax revenue at all. And then those minor adjustments for the interest revenue and the reserve for the new programs. When we look at the breakdown, we have seen again, a change on the distribution of our revenue as it compares to our budget. State appropriations currently make twenty-seven-and-a-half percent of our budget. Last year, we saw an increase from about eighteen percent to twenty-four percent. So we're up another three percent. Tuition and fee is also increasing. We had, I believe, last year was eight percent. We're at eleven percent. Other fees, eight-point-forty-three. The one that we're starting to see a change now, and again, this is now based on how we're getting additional funding from the state, is local taxes used to make sixty percent of our budget. It has dropped to fifty-three percent this fiscal year. And again, this is by adopting the proposed tax rate of the non-new revenue rate. For expenses, for the year, again, we're proposing a budget of eighty-million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three-thousand, four-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Salaries, an increase of two-point-one-million, and this includes a three-percent general pay increase. And also some of the recommended adjustments that TASB made, which included also the increase to the adjunct and overload pay. And it's also taking into account those additional positions that were part of the reorg. French benefits, the two major adjustments that we're making there is to account for the increase that will be needed for the social security portion and the TRS. All other benefit line items remain the same. We are not seeing an increase in the health insurance premiums, which is good news. So the cost, I know, I know we do have another item on insurance, but that is on the property.
Stay with the good news.
Yes, so no, no increase to health insurance premiums. And that certainly is reflected on, on the proposed budget. Again, the only two items that were increasing in the French benefits is just to account for the social security portion and the TRS contributions. Equipment, there's an increase of two-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-five. Seven, out of the seven million, we have four-million dollars of equipment, new equipment requested for the year. And this is primarily needed for the operations of the institution. We do have some equipment that's being requested for the Information Technology Department as well as our plant and operations and instructions. So those were the three major areas where the equipment request came from. An increase of supplies of a million dollars. And this, the reason for that increase again is as we're looking at upgrading technology, there are some software requests and subcommitments that we currently have where we are seeing some increases, but also new technologies that are being proposed. For student expenses, you see an increase of three-point-one-million, and this is where the Palomino pledge is being reflected. Again, this is the amount that was approved this summer for this coming fiscal year. For bad debt expense, we're maintaining the three-hundred-thousand, and these are all the, this is the projections that we have for uncollectible accounts. Contingency, we have seventy-five-thousand for, again, these are for any emergencies that may come out throughout the fiscal year. Professional development, and I do apologize, I think I'm showing the wrong number there. We do have an increase of four-hundred-and-eighty-nine-thousand, six-hundred-and-seven. So we're looking at about a million. And I'll give you that number right now.
One million, two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, three-fourty-four.
Yes, that is correct. One million, two-hundred-and-ten, three-fourty-four. And then for contracted services, we have an increase of one-million, four-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, five-fifty-two. In this line item, we have set aside, like I mentioned earlier, two-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand for the development of the next facilities master plan. Any questions on the expenses?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve.
Wait. We got one more step before we can go there. Are you done with the report?
Just a couple of more items. I'll just, this, this next slide, it just gives you a breakdown of where our budget is going to. Again, the major line item for the institution is for salaries and benefits. About sixty-four percent right now is going to the salaries and benefits. Operating expenses make up twenty-five percent of our budget. Professional development make about one-and-a-half percent, and the equipment makes eight-point-seventy-two percent. The next item is the tax rate. Again, the proposed twenty-twenty-four tax rate is point-two-four, two-four-one-eight. That is a decrease of two-and-a-half cents compared to the current twenty-twenty-three tax rate of point-two-six, seven-six, seven-five. The average home state taxable value back in twenty-twenty-three was two-hundred-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-ninety-seven. When we applied the twenty-twenty-three tax rate, that tax on a, on that taxable value averaged five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. The average home state taxable value for twenty-twenty-four is two-hundred-nineteen-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-seven. That's an increase of sixteen-thousand, six-hundred, or eight-point-seventy percent. By applying the proposed tax rate of point-two-four, two-four-one-eight, that yields a tax of five-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. That's a decrease of eleven dollars or two percent using those numbers. Now, when we look at the total tax levy for all properties located within the district, including the freeze taxable property, for twenty-twenty-three, we had a tax levy of fifty-five-million, eight-hundred-one-thousand, six-oh-three. For twenty-twenty-four, we're looking at a tax levy of fifty-six-million, eight-hundred-ten dollars, one-hundred-and-ninety-six. That's an increase of a million dollars or one-point-eighty-one percent. And again, the increase that you see is primarily because of those new properties that were added to the tax rule. And the last item that I have is just a look at all the operating budgets for all funds. And you can see that for twenty-twenty-four, we had a total budget of a hundred-and-fifty-million, one-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-two. For twenty-twenty-five, we're looking at a total budget of a hundred-and-forty-nine-million, one-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, thirty-six dollars. Again, this includes all your federal, state, and local funding, also the Pell Title Four, Pell Grant funding, the special appropriation for the import-export, as well as the as well as the auxiliary and the funding that we have for our physical plant department. Any questions on any of those line items?
Any questions? Okay. Okay. So Mr. Vela, can you please read the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget?
Yes. So whereas each year, the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District is required to have a budget prepared showing the estimated revenue and proposed expenditures for the succeeding school year and to cause the same to be filed in accordance with the rules and regulations prescribed by the Texas Higher Education Board. And whereas such a budget has been prepared and the public has been given notice that such budget would be presented for discussion and adoption on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, at the time and place specified in such notice. And whereas such budget has been discussed and a majority of the Board of Trustees wish to adopt same for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, be it resolved therefore that such budget be adopted and same is hereby adopted in all things, adopted this twenty-second day of August twenty-twenty-four by the Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair. Do I, I hear a motion, I have Ms. Leendo.
Madam Chair, I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve the resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five budget, which was read into the record.
I second that motion.
So I have a, Mr. Muir.
Oh, I'm sorry, I think that is correct, this is the budget.
Right, okay, so I have a motion by Ms. Leendo, I have a second by Mr. Martinez and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? And it doesn't, no discussion? Okay, they just have to have a record vote. Ms. Leendo?
I approve.
Ms. Ramos?
I approve.
Lupita, I approve. Mr. Delgado?
I approve.
Mrs. Garcia?
I approve.
Mr. Martinez?
I approve.
Mr. Angel?
I approve.
So all in favor, motion is carried, thank you. The next item we have is eleven B three, Resolution Authorizing Collection of General Use Fee and Expenditure, oh, excuse me. Before I go to B two. Ms. Ramos, you had a question?
No.
Oh.
You're reading eleven B two, right?
Yes. I was reading the wrong one. Eleven B two, is resolution adopting twenty-twenty-four property tax rate. Mr. Vela, can you go ahead and?
Yes. Whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District, in order to levy at valorem taxes, is required to set and establish a tax rate each year. Whereas said Board of Trustees conducted a public hearing on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four on the property tax rate in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Code. And whereas such Board of Trustees has considered this matter and desires to set the twenty-twenty-four property tax rate, be it resolved therefore that on August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, the twenty-twenty-four property tax rate be and the same is hereby set at point two four two four one eight for one hundred valuation of taxable property, of which point one nine seven five one five shall be for maintenance and operations and point zero four four nine zero three shall be for debt retirement. Such taxes are to be assessed and collected by the tax officials designated by Laredo College, adopted on this twenty-second day of August twenty-twenty-four by the Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Vela. Is there a motion from the Board to approve the resolution as read to adopt the twenty-twenty-four property tax rate?
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees adopt a property tax rate set at zero point two four two four one eight per one hundred dollar valuation of taxable property, of which zero point one nine seven five one five shall be for maintenance and operations and zero point zero four four nine zero three shall be for debt retirement. As part of my motion, I ask that the Board approve the resolution to adopt the twenty-twenty-four property tax rate, which was read into the record.
I second that motion, Madam Chair.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Mr. Martinez. Any discussion? And I do need to take a record vote by individually calling you. Mrs. Leendo?
I approve.
Mrs. Ramos?
I approve.
Lupita, I approve. Mr. Delgado?
I approve.
Mrs. Garcia?
I approve.
Mr. Martinez?
I approve.
Mr. Angel?
I approve.
The motion carries, thank you. The next item we have is eleven B three, which reads, Resolution Authorizing Collection of General Use Fee and Expenditure of Funds for Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-Five. Mr. Vela will present this item. Mr. Vela?
Board members, the next item is to approve the resolution authorizing the collection of general use fees. Whereas, whereas the Board of Trustees of the Laredo College District is authorized to fix and collect tuition and fees from students for the use of its property, buildings, and facilities. And whereas such Board of Trustees has deemed it necessary and advisable to collect a general use fee from students for the use of its property, buildings, and facilities and to apply such proceeds to the payment of principal and interest of certain revenue bonds issued and sold in twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen, and twenty-twenty for expenses generally associated with construction, reconstruction, remodeling, and repair of its property, buildings, and facilities. And whereas such Board of Trustees has determined that such general use fee should be set at fifty dollars per semester credit hour for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to be used as follows. Approximately four million three hundred twenty-six thousand nine hundred eighty-one for revenue bond debt service, approximately one million to be retained as general revenue for expenses related to physical plant operations and maintenance, and the balance for payment of construction, reconstruction, remodeling, and repair of property, buildings, and facilities. Be it resolved therefore that a general use fee be collected from students at the time of registration in the amount of fifty dollars per semester credit hour for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, adopted on this twenty-second day of August twenty-twenty-four by the Board of Trustees.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Okay, so I have a motion by Mrs. Garcia.
Second.
No, she needs to read the motion. I move that the Laredo College Board of Trustees approve and adopt the resolution authorizing the collection of a general use fee set at fifty dollars per semester credit hour for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five and the expenditure of funds for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five as itemized in the resolution, which was read into the record.
Second that motion.
So I have a motion and I have a second by Mr. Martinez. A record vote is required by individually calling on each member. Mrs. Leendo, Ms. Leendo, I'm sorry.
I approve.
Mrs. Ramos?
I approve.
Mr. Pedra, I approve. Mr. Delgado?
I approve.
Mrs. Garcia?
I approve.
Mr. Martinez?
I approve.
Mr. Angel?
I approve.
The motion carries, thank you. Okay, the next item we have is eleven C, is that's a resolution to approve transfer of thirty percent annual general operating fund savings to physical plant to cover deferred maintenance, maintenance projects. Mr. Sessar Vela?
Members of the Board, tonight we are requesting consideration and approval for the approval to transfer thirty percent of the annual general operating fund savings to physical plant to cover deferred maintenance projects. The college is currently in need of funding to address deferred maintenance projects here both at the Fort McIntosh and South campuses. The approval of the thirty percent transfer will allow the institution to properly fund the deferred maintenance fund to address deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment at both campuses. The Board had originally approved a twenty percent transfer back in twenty-twenty-one. During those last three fiscal years, we have transferred a total of five point nine million into the deferred maintenance. With that, with those funds, we have been able to address the restoration of roofs, both here at the main and south campuses. We've also made repairs to share lines for some of the buildings. We're in the process of restoring the Arechigo Hall. And we also addressed repairs to the parking lots here at the main campus. Again, this is a financial strategy that we have available to be able to cover some of these projects or deferred maintenance that has caused, that has caused issues here both at the main and at the south campus. So with that, we do have a resolution for consideration. I'll go ahead and proceed if there are no questions, I'll go proceed and read the resolution. Whereas the Board of Trustees of Laredo College desires to hereby approve a resolution relating to the transfer of annual general operating fund savings surplus to the deferred maintenance fund. Whereas the Board desires that the transfer of funds to the deferred maintenance fund shall be equal to thirty percent of annual general operating fund savings. Whereas the transfer of funds shall be used to cover costs associated with deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment as approved by the Board of Trustees. Whereas the Board agrees that such transfers will only be made if the general operating fund balance reflects no less than twenty percent of the general operating budget expenditures for that fiscal year. Now therefore be it resolved by the Laredo College Board of Trustees that for the effective period of this resolution, it shall be a goal of the Board to transfer thirty percent of annual general operating fund savings to the deferred maintenance fund to cover costs associated with deferred maintenance of facilities and equipment under the conditions specified above. The resolution, this resolution shall be, shall take effect upon it being passed and approved by the Laredo College District Board of Trustees. Passed and approved by the Laredo College District Board of Trustees on this twenty-second day of August twenty-twenty.
Okay, so I have, the resolution has been read. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a second by Mr. Martinez and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, I'm going to request a record vote again. Ms. Leendo?
I approve.
Mrs. Ramos?
I approve.
Myself, I approve. Mr. Delgado?
I approve.
Mrs. Garcia?
I approve.
Mr. Martinez?
I approve.
Mr. Angel?
I approve.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Vela. Thank you. Appreciate it. The next item is eleven D, Approval of Out-of-the-Country Travel. As per Laredo College Policy, CJ Local Transportation Management, Dr. Marisela Rodriguez de Herina.
Marisela Rodriguez de Herina, Provost Vice President of Economic Affairs. Here you, or before you, we have Dr. Mikolaj Korecki, who was invited to Poland. There's two cities where he has composed a lot, a lot of his obviously work. He's a very talented music instructor that we've had here at the college for twenty-two years, and he's very well-recognized. And he was invited to go to Poland where an orchestra, and I hope, hopefully I say it right, Stasine Poland, the Stasine Philharmonic Symphony Orchestra will perform one of his pieces. And then he was also invited to Roclaw, Poland, to a festival where they will also perform his work. And all he's asking, the trip is funded by the orchestra, the symphonies that are inviting him. The only thing he's asking is for his excuse absences. And I, I think it's, it's well-deserved for, for being a talented musician and representing Laredo College.
That's quite an honor.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the out-of-the-country travel.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, I have a second by Ms. Leendo and Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, motion approved.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Dr. de Herina. Next item is twelve, Executive Session, we have twelve A. Post-session Discussion of Laredo College Twenty-Twenty-One, Twenty-Twenty-Four Safety and Security Audit per T E C thirty-seven dot one oh eight C pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one dot zero seven one and five-five-one dot zero seven six. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
So I have a motion by Mrs. Ramos, a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. So it is approximately seven forty-two. The Board will adjourn into executive session pursuant to Sections five-five-one dot zero seven one and five-five-one dot zero seven six of the Texas Government Code to discuss Agenda Twelve A. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Are you taking these?
So we reconvened from closed session, the time now is eight twelve P M and the board took no action in executive session. We'll take action if appropriate. So item number on thirteen is thirteen A Laredo College twenty twenty one twenty twenty four, safety and security.
Motion for approval, Madam Chair.
Second.
So I have a motion by Mr. Martinez, I have a second by Mr. Delgado. Any discussion? None heard, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Next item is president's remarks, I have fourteen A campus police personnel and travel reports. Fourteen B is president's remarks, Dr. Miniter Ramirez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, in your packets, you all received a monthly crime log from our police uh department that they uh prepare for us every month and um, I, I think that uh you can see the increase in activity, you'll see the increase in activity next month as more and more vehicles come onto campus but um, I know that the last week they've opened up so many people's cars even in today's world with that locked the keys inside or couldn't find their keys or whatever and so um they're, they're definitely doing a lot more service for our students and our employees and so we're very grateful to them um for being here all the time and and certainly supporting all of us. As far as travel reports, I know that uh starting probably, well, we already have some folks out uh that are doing trainings and workshops and uh certainly state and uh national conferences and so uh all of these folks are going out to really increase their, their strategies, their abilities, their, their, their ability to do their own jobs and to help train others that they work with and so we're, we're very much uh promoting uh folks to, to continue to do that, I think that as we develop our own personnel it's important to give them the opportunities to attend uh state and national conferences and uh it's not often that a faculty member gets invited to, to Poland, for example, uh to, to not only represent our college but to represent their skill and their art and that is certainly something to, to to be proud of and, and, and worthy of recognition, so um there, there's a lot going on, we have a lot of events coming up, we also included in your in your packet a, a list of upcoming events, this week was welcome week uh for our students and you, you heard, you saw and, and heard from the students themselves but certainly this week has been filled with all kinds of really neat a- activities and uh last night's movie in the pool was uh Shrek and still we had two hundred, over two hundred students that were here in the pool uh it last night and uh enjoying the movie but enjoying meeting new people and, and the camaraderie in the pool. Uh today uh some of the students you met today and, and some of the staff members volunteered and we served hamburgers and hot dogs at both campuses as part of welcome week. Um yesterday afternoon they were making tie dye t-shirts and so there's lots of things to try to build the campus community. Uh and, and I have to report, I mean, we, we did have some technological issues this week the, that I'm praying that as of four o'clock this afternoon got taken care of as everyone else is too. Um and so uh I want to thank the, the faculty and the staff for their patience and um I did tell them at the beginning of the year that this year was gonna be a year filled uh with required patience and flexibility and but I never in my wildest dreams thought we were gonna be pushed to these limits uh and so quickly in the semester and so uh fortunately, I think we're, we're over that and um and I think everybody will will breathe easier this evening and tomorrow and the, the rest of the semester. On Monday, w- we will have the uh posi- ballot position drawing for those uh trustees that are running for election or reelection uh at five thirty in this room. Uh we also have a tentative uh art exhibit, a student art exhibit that will be opening on September sixth uh in the V P A at the Martha uh I always have trouble say Fenstermaker uh Memorial Visual Arts Gallery uh September tenth. Uh we will probably have a press conference uh with uh A T and T is donating fifty laptops to one of our programs and so um that is being led by uh Mr. Rene Gonzalez, Director of Donor Relations. Uh and thank you, Ms. Sepeda, for making that contact for us to get those fifty laptops. And, and the rest of the semester is, is filled with all kinds of, of things that the departments, the, the programs uh are all doing to, to increase participation and retention. Uh and we're thrilled to, to have the semester started and moving in the right direction, so with that, Madam Chair, I, I'll conclude my, my remarks, I know that everybody is tired, it's been a long week for everyone and wants to get home.
Okay, any questions, discussion? Chair recognizes Mrs. Ramos.
I, before we conclude, I wanted to thank everybody on the board. Once again, I think we did a marvelous job, but I do want to bring uh special attention to Mr. Vela, Ms. Gomez, uh Ms. Barrera, um Dr. Ramirez for the leadership. Uh eighty million dollars is a lot of money for our budget, but we see the fruits of our labor, what we're doing, what we've uh planned. Um I see that we do have different sources of funding and uh I'm especially uh ecstatic that we decreased uh the tax rate, even though the property evaluations went up. Uh I want the citizens of Laredo and the community to understand that uh we tirelessly work to make sure that I'm included, I pay taxes, we all pay taxes and that, that we get the best uh for, for our dollar. And we're doing so with our kids, a testament uh was seen today with our, with our students and how excited they are to, to participate in orientation, you know, I mean, the excitement that exists is, is, is um contagious and uh you know, we're doing a good job but we, we always, you know, strive to do better, Dr. Esola, you mentioned that. Um but more than anything, uh our taxpayers uh should be applauded for being there for our college, but we need to applaud ourselves as well for doing our due diligence, always working together and always making sure that I treat this budget like if it was my, my, my bank account, right? I mean, I'm gonna do the best to make sure that my budget, that I balance my budget every month, right? And uh while I don't have that number in my budget or in my bank account uh but I do see the resemblance of my due diligence along with my colleagues and so I um, I thank each and every one of you for being a part of this. Uh Ms. Sepeda for your leadership.
Thank you.
Mr. Delgado for your vice president leadership, Ms. Garcia, Judge Martinez, Mr. Angel, uh Ms. Vela, Ms. Leendo and Ms. Elizondo all working at together as a team. Uh we're just the ones that approve these things, right? But Mr. Vela, you know, he, he, he needs to be ready to answer questions and you're always on the dot, you know, sharp. So I, I really wanted to conclude the meeting like that because I think it's a very big deal uh that we pass this budget and we are in the positive and that our tax rate is holding steady and that we are helping our community, our citizens, we're educating our students and we're preparing the workforce so that they can turn around and come back and you know it's just a very good feeling and I'm honored to be amongst you all, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ramos. Chair recognizes Mr. Angel. We can't hear you.
I didn't meet the, can you guys hear me?
Yes, now we can.
I didn't meet the deadline, but uh, uh I know that I do want to go ahead and start the process, so uh I will be probably attending the A C C T conference with Ms. Ramos as well. So I wasn't able to meet the deadline, uh I don't know if Dr. Ramirez would need to put the item, but I do want to go ahead and just make sure that all the travel is recovered as soon as possible. So if it needs to be on the next board meeting, that's fine, but if not, is, I hope this suffice. So uh I would just uh notifying the board, meaning that it's an informational item.
Dr. Ramirez.
Yes? We will, we'll contact A C C T uh since I, I think the registration I don't know if the registration is over or not, but I'll, we'll contact A C C T tomorrow.
I believe it was August the fifteenth or something like that.
Yes, so.
But then there's like a
The delay registration.
Yeah, late registration.
Yeah, we'll call them tomorrow and see, and see what, what the deal is and what it's gonna cost and all of that, okay?
For clarification purposes, ma'am.
Yes, Mrs. Ramos.
Um for clarification purposes, Mr. Angel was alluding to the fact that he would like to attend the A C C T, which is the national conference uh for the Association of Community College Trustees. Uh Dr. Ramirez and myself had already signed up for, for this and we had already brought it to the board and so um we welcome Mr. Angel to, to participate with us. Um it's gonna be an opportunity for us uh on my part. Uh I have been invited to speak uh on behalf of the individuals that hire uh college presidents and yeah, Dr. Ramirez has been my second college president that I, that I participated in the hiring process. So I'll be a part of panel that I will be participating and then uh Dr. Ramirez is also participating in another forum uh that is bringing um wonderful ideas to other community colleges across the country. And so we'll be participating with that also as well, so we're excited and more the merrier and you know, I mean, anybody wants?
And it's not until October, so I think we're, we're in good, we're
She can still bring it back.
Yes, so
To a board meeting.
October twenty third through the twenty sixth, I believe.
Yes.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, did you not have anything to say?
No.
Okay. So I'm gonna go to the next item, is our next meeting is Thursday, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty four at six P M. It's a regular monthly Board of Trustees meeting. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
So I have a, a motion by Mr. Delgado, a second by Mr. Martinez and Mrs. Ramos. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries, meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Good evening. You all still leave anyway. You still need. Thank you, sir, thank you so much.